Good evening, welcome to the Bennington Select Board meeting. Tonight is January 28th, 2019. Happy to have you all here tonight. As is our custom, we're going to start by introductions and we have Nancy Lively on then who has her own microphone tonight.
I do. You may regret that.
Good evening, Chad Gordon.
Hello, I'm Jeanne Jenkins.
I'm Jim Carroll.
Carson Thurber.
Thank you everyone for coming, I'm Jean Conner.
And I'm Stuart Herd, Town Manager.
I don't think I introduce myself, but I am Donald Campbell, I'm the Vice Chair. I'm sitting in for Tom Jacobs who's away this week. And before we start our meeting, Jeanne, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
The Pledge of Allegiance is as follows. In the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will move to a consent agenda, which starts with the minutes of January 12th, 14th, and 16th. Jim, you'll probably be recusing on the 16th, right?
If I wasn't here, yes.
Yes, okay. So, is there a motion to approve the minutes and warrants circulated?
So moved.
Second.
Second, okay. Thank you. Any discussion on the minutes from January 12th, 14th, 16th? Lot of meetings this month, or this past month, and the warrants. Any questions, any comments? Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 Recusal for the 16th.
And Jim recuses on the 16th, okay, thank you.
Or abstain, I guess.
So, let's move into our public comment period. The first person on our list is Rose Telford, and please come up, Rose.
I want to ask a question about what's, has the new director been chosen for the senior citizens? Senator?
Stuart, why don't you? Not yet.
What are they waiting for?
We're working on it.
Can you, can you give any more than that, or is that?
Well, I think that we are looking at a variety of proposals that may bring the senior center a little bit more under the umbrella of the Recreation Center and the Y, and we have some discussions that we have to have with you folks, and then there'll be some personnel decisions to have to be made.
So maybe there's a lot more to tell you fairly soon.
So they're, they're gonna combine them?
Hasn't been decided yet.
We're not working on it.
That's what we're in the process of working on, as I understand, our Town Manager, yeah?
Well, technically, they already are combined. When Tracy Knights was the Director, she was given authority over both the Senior Center and the Recreation Center because they both provide recreational and social opportunities for the people of the community of all ages. And Sue Hoed was the Program Director at the Senior Center and retained her position Mayor, and worked with Tracy to continue the operations at the center. So technically, they are already combined.
So this is something we really care about, and we are really wanting to make better and stronger for you. I know this means a lot to you, and this whole board really wants to work on this and deliver a better set of programs for the Senior Center, as well as for the Rec Center.
I know, I've talked with a lot of them, and a lot of them are very concerned. They think that you're trying to do away with anything that's gonna help any seniors. They're very, very upset. I mean, they told me.
Yeah.
And I really don't blame them.
Well, I hope we can let this play out a little bit, because I don't want to speak for this board, but from our budget discussions, it seems pretty clear that we really do care a lot about the Senior Center, and we really want to see it strong, we want to see a steady town investment, we want to see steady staffing there. You know, we don't have all the answers right now, but in short order, we should have more answers.
Rose, I just want to tell you, you know, tell your friends, and yourself, to rely on facts, not on rumors or supposition, you know? I think that's the best way to calm, calm things down.
With what little that you've done for the Senior Center, it's not sort of like you've done a lot to help them. Help us, I should say.
Rose, I do think that if you can wait until the proposal is on the table, I think none of us quite know what's being proposed, but it will, you will certainly, you know, you certainly, and everyone at the Senior Center will find out. Stu, my understanding is there will be conversations with anyone at the Senior Center that wants to, to know what the thoughts are, right?
Yes, as soon as we have discussed the personnel issues involved, and you folks have given us the authority to move forward.
What do you mean by, what do you mean by personnel issues?
Well, we have to, we have to fill a position.
Personnel.
Personnel.
Personal.
Not personal, I'm sorry.
Person having personal.
That's for me.
Thank you, Rose. We will, we will bird dog this and keep after it, and we expect you to keep after us, too.
I won't say anymore, I would like to, but I won't.
Next on the list is Betsy Greenwell. Good evening, thank you for coming.
Thank you. I am here as a Bennington resident and as a Main Street merchant, and I watched the presentation that was given two weeks ago at the other meeting by the group for the downtown, or for the marketing money that is going to be proposed, I think it was $50,000. So it wasn't clear in that presentation when will it be decided how that money is going to be used and by whom. I was wondering if you had an answer to that? I couldn't gather that from what I saw in the presentation.
Stuart, would you like to describe the way you feel that this was set up? I can tell you what I think, but why don't you start?
Well, it's really, it's really the board's decision, but nonetheless, we have, we have identified $50,000 that we can use towards a townwide marketing plan. So it's, it's not necessarily focused on the downtown, but on the community as a whole. The board has, has not yet determined how we will move forward. That will probably be discussions that we hold over the next month or so, as we move towards the July 1 operations, because some of the funds will come from the next fiscal year budget, should it be approved, and I'm hoping that it will be approved. But we'll know probably in a month or two exactly how the community, or how the board will move forward and be able to expend those funds in support of Bennington.
Okay, great. So I just wanted to give a little bit of my own input. I really enjoyed watching the presentation, I thought it was very well done, and there were some great points. We do need to market our town, and I know we don't have as much money as some other towns have, and it is taxpayer money that's going to be utilized for that. But the first thing I just want to say personally, as far as how we're gonna, when you're thinking about whoever you decide, we met downtown today, just with a group of community members, business owners, we met this afternoon, and a lot of people were just, and some Select Board members, people that are known to be running, and we were just discussing the whole $50,000, and you know, what ideas we had for how you guys could hopefully decide how that's used. And what we came up with was that, I know there's a community development person that will be being hired, I think there's a job opening for that.
That's right, we're working on that now.
Right, and I haven't looked at the job description, but I would hope you would consider that the person who's hired for that job would be the person who would be handling the marketing funds, and that maybe in the job description, when you decide that, you could actually add them into the job description, so they would be a little bit more incentivized, that they have this great job to help market Bennington, and they also have a budget to expend to help do that. So that's just one thing.
Yeah.
And another.
Before you go on, we have, that is the way we've been talking about it to date, so we haven't finalized a lot of things, but at our board discussions, we've been thinking about the Community Development Director as, as one of the places where this, where this would get distributed through the town, but we don't have that person right now.
Right, and I mean, just, it would make sense, because that person could be accountable, et cetera, you guys would understand that. The other thing is, it would be really great if, when you guys do decide, there's a lot of people involved, there's not just the downtown people, there's not just North Bennington, there's the community, there's the museums, there's the, excuse me, the colleges, the schools. It would be awesome if we could all have input on how we want to market Bennington. It's, there's a lot of towns, there are people in the town that have great ideas, and it would be great to have this community development person be able to maybe have some kind of work sessions, you know, to discuss what we would like, what ideas we have. When I worked on the Bennington Community Built Park, that's exactly what we did, the guys came in from Leathers in Syracuse, and we all met in the library, and everyone was just giving their input, and that's how they decided how to build that Bennington Community Built Park. It was just a great coordination of ideas, so I was hoping that you could consider that. And then, this is just a personal thing, and I know it was a very, the presentation you guys were shown, "The Vermont Begins Here" was one of the ideas, and I know, I'm not the Marketing Director or anything, but I really hope that when you guys, when we all discuss how our town is going to be branded, that we put the word "Bennington" in it, because I think "Vermont Begins Here" could be any town in Vermont. So that was just like, one side comment I had about the whole presentation. I think it makes sense to put "Bennington" in our branding. And I think that was all I just wanted to bring up, because I'm taxpayer, I love this town, I've been here since 1992, I think we have a lot to offer. I talk to people who come into my shop all the time, and they love it here, and we need to get the word out.
Yeah, we love your shop, too.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you for, thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Nancy White. Good evening.
Hi. I just want to remind everybody in town that next Monday, here at the Firehouse at 6:00 PM, will be the first of two public hearings on why many of us want to switch to a mirror form of government. I've come before the board several times over the past couple of years with concerns as to how I think the homeowners of this town, the local taxpayers, have been sold out. Many of the people who signed the petition also feel like they've been sold out. The things that I heard most from people, the private sector jobs with good pay and benefits. For 30 years, we paid for economic development. For the first 20 years, we were told that the majority of this money would create or bring new jobs to Bennington to replace all the jobs that we've lost. Are there any new jobs in the private sector that are going to be coming to Bennington?
I can address that if you'd like.
Yeah.
No.
Jim Edley.
I think this needs to be addressed.
Very, very.
And I'm gonna, I will. I'm on the Commerce Committee, and I'm on Pelear. Nancy, let me tell you that this is a common complaint around the state, and I want to go right to the heart of this. There are over 10,000 good paying jobs in the state of Imran that are going unfilled.
I'm talking about Bennington.
I'm not finished, please, let me finish. And the reason that they're not going filled is because there's a disconnect between the Secretary of Education and the school boards in this town, and they're, they're good paying jobs, and the, the students in this state are not being trained to fill them, and it's statewide.
Are you aware of the program that the Governor announced last week?
Yes.
Okay. $5,000 to pay someone from outside of the state to move here. What the Governor didn't say is many of the people moving here won't be able to afford to live here. The taxpayers will subsidize their housing, their health care, their education, and the list goes on. Where does the responsibility start from local and state officials? We can't afford to live here. We should be seeing big cuts in budgets at the local and state level. I hear about all these dreams and projects and programs in Bennington, you don't have any money coming into Bennington to offset these costs. We're tired of hearing about what we need to do for people from outside of the state. We want something to be done to help the homeowners of this community. And I can't help the jobs in the other part of the state. Are there jobs in Bennington?
Yes.
Good paying jobs?
Yes.
Okay. Poverty is another huge issue. Time and time again, people are asking, where is the plan in Bennington to lift people out of poverty so that our poverty level is going to start to decrease?
Nancy, go ahead, no, no, we're not, no, we're not doing a debate right now, go ahead and make your points.
Well, this is, this is, 500 people signed the petition. Time and time again, we have paid for many projects and programs.
Great, we can, we can talk about it the next two meetings that are coming up, if you want to discuss the mayor issue then.
All right, so you will be, you will be speaking.
But, but if you've read the town plan, and if you know what we've been working on, we've been working on a lot of these issues for a long, long time.
Okay.
And this isn't a forum to debate it, so we're not, I'm, I'm gonna try to.
You made it a priority in 2012. Since 2012, the poverty level in this town jumped 25 percent. You never bothered to do a study to find out why. Many of the projects and programs in Bennington are using poverty as their main funding tool for economic development.
Well, I question your logic, but it's not, it's not mine to do at this point. Do you have any other points you'd like to make tonight?
I think citizens would like some answers, but.
We're not, we're not doing that right now.
Why don't you all get down, or something, he's got something to say, it's like.
This, citizens' comment is, is a time for citizens to make comments, for us to give short factual answers, if short factual answers are available, but not to engage in complicated debate. If we want to have this as a complicated debate, we should make it a.
Okay, so you will be able to have the answers next week for this?
Some, some people will, yeah, the people who choose to attend will, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we are now going to move from public comment into a consideration of a community solar project, and this gets a little bit complicated. Much as I love to, much as I love to oversee a good solar project, I am conflicted on this one. So I have, one of the applicants is a cousin, and I also work for the Vermont Land Trust, who is involved in this project, so I'm not going to vote or lead this, but I'm gonna ask Jim if he would lead this particular conversation, and if it's okay with the board, I'm not gonna sit down, I'm just going to sit here and keep my mouth shut, is that all right?
Sure.
Okay. Take it over, Jim.
Okay, who's, who's here to speak?
Bima.
Bima, yes.
Good evening, Members of Select Board, Members of Public. My name is Bima Neta, I'm the owner of Power Guru Solar Electric Systems. We are the proposed installer for the, proposed project developer for the Shadow Bukram Community Solar Project. Sitting next to me is David Pearson, the owner of the land, on which we plan to install the, the project.
Gordon, you want to tell us about the project?
Yes, I think.
Brief overview, yeah, we have a lot of data here, and a lot, and we have the plenty of data, but if you would give us a brief overview from your own perspective as to the project itself, and then I think the board would, would open it to questions.
Right, so the project would be located on the land of David Pearson, Elizabeth Beal, and Susan Beal. It's about 231 acres of land, the project itself would only comprise half an acre out of that. It would be on a field, which is about four acres in a rectangular area. It is surrounded by trees on three sides, and would be screened on the port side. The project comprises of two arrays, each of them is about 300 feet long. Total number of modules is about 650. It'll be a 150 kilowatt community solar project, and the project would be serving the residents of Bennington. There would be the commercial, either commercial customers or residential. We also have interest from a couple of nonprofits, Bennington Project Independence, Bennington Coalition for the Homeless, have both expressed interest. So they would be potentially the customers for the, for the power.
Well, Bima, you know, I've looked at this, and one of the things that, you know, that I, I was part of the, the ordinance developed around solar arrays, and Donald was on there as well, and one of the, our most important factors was the site of, not only the sighting, but the visual impact. And I'm gonna pass this around to the audience to see, and these are elevation photographs that depict how they won't be seen, so let me pass that around.
Yes, I have a few other pictures as well, so if you'd like, I can pass them to you too. Maybe you can pass this around as well.
Bima, let me go on further to say that, you know, this really conforms very strongly to the solar ordinance that we developed and implemented in the, the town plan, and this is like a picture-perfect example of it, and furthermore, the Vermont Land Trust wrote, I'll just read the, the final paragraph. This is from the Vermont Land Trust. "In summary, the Vermont Land Trust has determined that the project is modest in scale, will have no lasting, long-term impact on the agricultural resources, and will be sighted in a manner that will not affect the property's scenic views. Further, the generated power will benefit the local community. Thus, the proposed changes to the property and the proposed uses are not inconsistent with the grant. Vermont Land Trust," excuse me, "will continue to work with the Beal family in Power Guru LLC to ensure the proposed plans are executed in compliance with the grant." Now, the Vermont Land Trust is meant to be an independent, impartial group that evaluates these sorts of things, and I can't, you know, that's a pretty positive endorsement.
Thank you. We worked with them to cite the, to pick the proper site, we looked at a few different sites, and this seemed to be the most suitable as far as both our needs and the, the Land Trust's requirements of, of proper sighting and ensuring that it's, it does not take too much land and is properly screened.
Any other board members like to?
I just have one question. You mentioned, I can't find it in the document, that there's a neighbor to the east?
Yes.
That it won't be screened, I'm just, is that neighbor aware, have they been part of the process?
Yes, that's Terry Caulfield, and, and we have, we've spoken with him, and, or actually, his wife, and, and the, the visual impact from, from them is really only on the second floor of their house. They would, in, particularly in winter, be able to see a little, you know, corner of the array, but it's still pretty minimal from there.
Okay, thank you, that's the only question I had.
So the location of the site is about 800 feet from the Caulfield residence, and the site is screened on the east side, the north side, and the south side by trees. The only open side would be, I'm sorry, the, yeah, the, the only open side would be the west side of the site, and we plan to screen that side as well.
Okay.
Go on, Stu.
No questions? Sounds like a great project.
Thank you.
Stu, do we need to vote on this, or does it have to be heard again?
Well, I think a motion to approve is appropriate, because this is part of your solar sighting ordinance, so you folks have the final say.
Okay, I'll entertain a, a motion.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Nancy, I think you said.
Further discussion?
The only thing I wanted to add, I'm sure everybody's read these minutes and notes and everything, but it just says here, "The Planning Commission determined by consensus that the project complies with the town plan, and as stated in the town plan, should be considered, considered as being located on a preferred site and eligible for all regulatory and financial incentives associated with larger-scale solar installations pursuant to Public Utility Commission rule." It goes through the rule, but just with consensus, the Planning Commission said this was a good project, so I think that's just important to know.
Anybody else?
I think that's it. I think this board is, you may have come expecting a lot more debate about that, but it's, to me, like, this board is supportive of community solar, so thank you for making that.
Brilliant, thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is the Y Woods use and plan discussions, so RJ Jolly and Dave Dentson would love to hear what's going on in the Y Woods, and I think after you've given us a brief summary, if there's anybody in the audience that has questions, we will, we'll take those questions, so that we can get everything out, see what, see what people want to know.
Okay. I don't know a lot about the Y Woods, I know back when I was in high school in mid-'80s, they were, the CDC was using the Y Woods for their forestry program, and they have been for the last few years, they're not up there right now, but Dave is the instructor for CDC, the forestry program, and he will, he knows a lot more about it than I. The, the DPW does use the Y Woods on occasion for trainings, game of logging, chainsaw safety. We do go up there every once in a while, once every couple of years, and cut maybe 15 trees down, so other than that, CDC goes in there on occasion. So I'll give it to Dave.
I'm, I'm not really sure either, I guess there, there might be some questions about what's going on, but officially, we really haven't done any timber harvesting or anything in there in probably at least eight years. We were in there recently from when they did the game of logging training. I was up there doing some lab work, and I saw the trees were on the ground, so we, we made them into firewood, skidded them out to the landing, processed it, lopped the tops down, and made sure the trail was clear, and I honestly didn't go up any further than where, where that was, so I guess if there were some questions, I'd be happy to.
Would you be willing to, do we have a forest management plan on that project? No?
No.
So what is the, what is the planning process for, for forestry on that?
As far as I'm concerned, I worked with, the last county forester that, that worked with us there was Nathan Feis, who's been gone for quite a while. Nathan worked with my students, and we marked the entire woodlot, and we did a crop tree release, you know, the idea to take advantage of the fact that my class can come in and use it as a lab, take out the, you know, the less valuable trees, the firewood, and leave all the, the better trees to, to grow, and that's exactly what we did. So the woodlot's kind of the bottom part of it, as RJ had mentioned, the forester class had worked in there quite a long time ago, and they did a lot of thinning in the bottom, so the bottom is beautiful, there's some really nice, pretty now-mature sugar maple. And then the top, which, which I guess, as I understand, it was the old YMCA camp, is fairly young, and is quite a mess, honestly. There's a lot of younger pioneer-stage pine timber in there, and there's a lot of invasive species, it's, it's actually, it's, it's not that great, but we, we thinned in there with the idea that we, we really didn't want to open it up too much, because the more sunlight that we let in there, the worse the invasives were getting, so we did a little kind of pre-commercial thinning through there under the guidance of Nathan, and we really haven't done anything since then. I think there's a lot of confusion, I'm guessing anyway, because of the fact that the, adjacent to the town lot, there's a spruce plantation, it's owned by Park Lawn Cemetery. And a few years ago, they contracted with a logger to come in and do some work there, so he thinned the spruce stand and had permission from the town, I guess, to skid down through and land the wood on the Y Woods landing, and then after that, we've, we've had several pretty good wind events that have happened, and uprooted, snapped off a lot of trees in there. I contacted the manager at the Park Lawn Cemetery, went in, we salvaged some of the trees, we did a game of logging competition last year at the school, and that's where the trees that we planted in the ground came from, but other than that, we haven't really done anything in there, so I guess if there's questions about.
Okay, well, before we go to, let's do some board questions first, and Jeanne, you prepared to start?
Sure.
Is it okay to start at this end?
Sure.
Thanks.
So, can you just give us a sense of what, where the boundary between what the town owns and what Park Lawn owns, where that is?
Yeah, and I probably should have brought a map, but there's, there's, it's an easy, very easy way to explain it, is, is where, where the evergreens start, that's, that's That's, that's the plantation that's on Park Lawn. So there's a trail that runs, I guess it'd be kind of north and south, the upper trail, and that, you know, if you were on that trail, the upper side of the hill is Park Lawn where the spruce plantation is, and the lower part is the Y Woods. And then it, there's a, there's a corner in there, right where the plantation is, and the town lot kind of corners there and follows as well. The trail, I think if you were to actually look at it and have it surveyed, a good part of that upper trail is actually on Park Lawn. There's an old stone wall in there.
Yep.
Not sure about pins, but there was a little bit of an issue with the boundary line when we first started in there. The forester didn't realize where the property line was either. They kind of just assumed that it was the, the plantation, so. But we kind of worked through that with the, with the cemetery, so.
You just explained, you characterized the top and the bottom. What, what is that? Is the top the north, the bottom the south? What's the top and the bottom?
The east, towards Middle Pound Road.
Okay, so that's bottom? Okay. And then I guess my other question is, if there's work being done in the woods, is it, can we assume it's the CDC?
I, I don't know if you should assume that. Like, as RJ had mentioned, every couple of years, the DPW guys go up and they do some game of logging classes up there.
Right, and I hear that's been fantastic.
Yeah, and I honestly have no intentions of doing anything in there, except when, like, there's some blowdowns and there's some other, you know, wood that could be salvaged that's on the ground. It makes a nice place to work, but there's really no, there's no timber harvesting or anything like that scheduled.
Okay.
Anytime in the future.
And then my other question is, if people have a question or a concern about what they're seeing when they're in the woods, or, you know, if they abut the woods, who should they call? Should they call Stu? Should they call RJ? I don't, I know they shouldn't call you, but I guess I'm just curious who they should get in contact with.
They can call me.
Call you? Okay.
Either or.
Either or. Okay, thank you. Those are all the questions that I have.
Carson, anything from you?
No.
No? It is part of our parks inventory, so I think a call to Stuart would probably be pretty appropriate, and certainly the clearing of trails is important to all of us, since everybody uses it, and I know that that's ongoing. I'm not quite sure who that falls to, but it does seem to happen. Is that a, is that something that parks folks do, or do they ask you to help out when the trees fall down?
I, I walked up there last summer, I guess, and it was very clear. Yeah, if we get a complaint, we go in and we can clear it, but normally, I think the neighborhood keeps the trails pretty clean by the looks of things. I could see where a tree here and there blew over, and it looks like, I assume, the neighbors keep it clear. A lot of people walking in there.
It's an interesting little park. I, I don't know if you did, Jim, but I went to Y Camp there back in the day, and I remember getting eaten by mosquitoes unbelievably, my first experience with that. But it is a, it's a great park. It's, it's kind of an interesting size, and it does feel like we could probably have a little bit of a community process on, on how we use it and how, what we do with it, but we're not doing that tonight. I think we're just getting an overview of, of who's taking care of it. But we probably could give it some more love over the years. Anyway, Gina?
So I'll pick up on the giving it a little more love. So is there a, it's in our inventory, and, and do we have, so it doesn't sound like there's any sort of usual, we tromp up there every year and check out what's going on, or every spring, we're, we're clearing away debris, or is there...
Not normally, unless we get a complaint.
And, and that, why, why is that?
Well, the Y Woods is considered, it's considered recreational parkland, not part of our woodlots, so it's not, it's not a parcel that we look at to log or to harvest. We simply look at it as a way to maintain. And so if the people who are using the woods notice that there is blowdown or anything, all they've got to do is reach out to us and say, "Look, there's a tree across the trail." It'll either be, Public Works will go up there and take care of it, or if it's, if it's something sizable that we think David and his class can, can learn from, we'd reach out to David and have them...
Okay, so there is a process? So the assumption is that the town will take care of it?
But it's really, traditionally, it's been a CDC and town related. We've not brought many other people in there over the years.
Okay. And so does it feel like that's sufficient? I mean...
There are very nice walking trails up there.
Yeah.
They're very wide, and they're not marked or anything for intersections. There's several, but you can make a pretty good loop in there.
Yeah.
It's a nice place to walk, you know, it's pretty much downtown between Crescent Boulevard and the cemetery, Park Lawn.
Yeah, so I used to walk up there a lot, and I haven't for a while, and I was trying to describe my husband how to get in there, and I couldn't do that. So it's, because you're sort of walking along the edge of private property, right, to walk in? Is there any...
Morgan Street's a good access.
The easiest access is off of Morgan Street. There's a, there's a landing area where you can park your vehicle. You can actually drive up there and park your vehicle in the woods there. That's the easiest access. There is access off of Crescent Boulevard via a narrow strip of land, but that's not identified.
And I'm thinking people don't want it identified?
People might be thinking, up to no good if you're walking down that particular path.
Okay, all right. I'll leave that alone then. Okay, thank you.
Chad, anything from you?
No.
Okay, so are there people in the audience that would like to ask questions? Come on up and identify yourself if you would please. Sure. Tom, come, if you could come to...
No, no, no.
Come on up. Would be interested to know what your questions are about the Y Woods.
This isn't public commentary.
I don't really have a question. I've just lived up there for 26 years, and I've been about, I don't know, six or eight feet of the boundary line between our property and the trail, and I've never had a problem, ever, except when they used to have a few of the three-wheelers, four-wheelers up there, which we haven't had in quite a few years. So I think it's a great place. I think it's sad that the town doesn't know about it for the most part. You know, there's a few people up there now walking their dogs and hiking and running and cross-country skiing, but it's a great place to just wander around and have a little peace and quiet. You should come up and check it out sometime. I've got a sign...
Good man.
...near my driveway that says, "Welcome," and it shows you how to get to the trail.
Oh, wait, it's your property on the edge?
No, no. It's different, it's different.
My property, the sign that I made.
Don't tell the sign ordinance people.
Okay.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you for that, yeah.
I have an old sermon I have run by.
That's great. Other, other comments or questions about the Y Woods? So it'd be great if you could go to the mic so the people on TV can hear you.
It has nothing to do with us, it's the people on the television.
If you're willing to do that, that would be great. I gave Tom a pass because he was...
I think you'll be able to hear me.
No, it's the, you need a mic.
It's the people on TV.
Is it that bad?
Yeah.
Yeah. You need a mic.
Okay.
Sorry about this. This is, we've...
No. Sorry, just short and sweet.
All right.
I've been in the area, basically across the street, from the, what we always consider the woods, and when we first moved here, you could cross-country ski there. Now, it's an obstacle course. That's basically what I wanted to bring. If they're going to improve it as to a wildwood park, it's got to have a lot more attention.
Great. So tell us your name for the minutes, if you would, please.
I'm William Harts. I live on Eastside Drive, corner of Crescent Boulevard.
Thank you. So do you, could you imagine that there could be a process that we could put some thought into this and make it a better place? Or I hear Tom saying it's a pretty nice wild place the way it is.
I will throw this out. It's just, came to the top of my head. In the springtime, I always have it green up. Why can't we include the woods as part of that program?
Yeah? Sounds good. Yeah?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your comments. Other questions for, come on up. Thanks for making the, making the run.
Hello, I'm Art Haco. I, I live right on the Y Woods. I very frequently am in the, in there hiking around. Several years ago, a couple of friends of mine who are in the cycling club asked for permission to build some mountain bike trails out there. Probably six or seven years ago. Some logging was done, the trails were pretty destroyed. We kind of cleaned them up, did the best we could with them. They're not used as much as the newer trails up, off of Mount Anthony. I do a lot of the cleaning, moving, trimming, trying to keep the thorn bushes and stuff back so that, so we can enjoy it, so everybody can enjoy it. Just hoping that maybe we might be able to talk with the Bennington Area Trail System, the BATS crew. I'm sure we could put together a group once or twice a year to get up there and do a little cleanup, green up, if that would be approved. Thank you.
Thanks, Art. That's a good idea. Yep, that's good. Other citizens on the, on the Y Woods? Well, it sounds to me like we, we should talk about this a little bit, but it sounds to me like an area of opportunity for us, maybe to think about how it could do a little bit more for our community, if we could figure out a way to work with the volunteer groups like the BATS folks and maybe some of the neighbors. So why don't we keep that in our hopper of things that we'd like to work on? If you look at the, the work the town's done on the Greenberg, the Willemseck Headwaters Park, it's just amazing that that land went from a piece of trashy swamp and unusable land to something that, you know, thousands of people get to use and love, so not saying that we should...
And it's adjacent.
And it's adjacent. Not saying we want to overuse the Y Woods and, and create neighborhood issues, but, but we could perhaps put a little thought into how we could do that better. So, okay, yeah, one more. Yeah. Except, would you mind going to the mic? I'm so sorry about the mic. Thank you.
My question is this. The...
She's getting there, she's getting there.
So, did I hear you correctly that the stuff that's down more towards the cemetery, that's not an area that you take care of at all?
No.
No, it's theirs, and they have somebody coming in and taking care of that?
No. We, like I said, they had, they had it harvested, and then because of the nature of thinning a plantation like that, a lot of the trees blew over, snapped off, and will continue to do that probably until most of them are gone. We, we've gone in and kind of salvaged some of that stuff, and I wouldn't mind doing more of that in the future, because it's, it's actually pretty nice wood. But I just, you know, would call up the, the manager of the cemetery and say, "Hey, there's a bunch of blown-down trees in there, do you mind?" He'd say, "No, go for it." So that's kind of where, where it's ended.
I think one of the, you know, one of the things that we kind of worry about, who are our neighbors up at the Y Woods, and I am also, I'm Paula Haco, I'm Art's wife.
Thank you.
Is, you know, when the trees, you know, blow down is one thing, but when they're cut down and then they're left on the trail, that doesn't make us too happy.
No, I can see that.
But it seems like the biggest, that, that biggest area, that's the biggest problem is...
Yeah, it will.
...down by the cemetery.
It will continue to be that way, yeah.
Because that's private property and beyond our control?
Right.
Yeah.
And we didn't, I guess we didn't realize that.
Okay, okay.
So when...
And anybody can use our house, too, to go to the Y, we don't care.
That's very generous. Thank you.
So if there's a tree down in the part of the woods that's owned by the cemetery, should they still call Stu?
No.
Who should they call?
The cemetery.
The cemetery, okay. Yep.
Yeah, and the cemetery, we don't know, they may or may not have an interest in...
Yeah, I'm not sure if they'd run right out there and clear it for you either.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll just get out there with our own chainsaws?
But maybe an opportunity for a partnership or a conversation with them, you know, there might be a trail agreement we could work into, so let's work on that.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You mentioned a map, did you remember online? Is that something online, so you...
I'm not sure. I just, over the years of working in there, I don't know where they ever originated from. I may have even made them. I'm not sure if they are online or not.
Our tax maps would give you a pretty good idea of that. It wouldn't help you on the ground so much, but maybe we could get that a little blazing out there at some point.
Yeah, we can make that available to you. There, we use the Lister's map, and if it's a surveyed, property originally surveyed, it'll indicate that on the Lister's map.
Great. Okay, well, thank you, gentlemen, for coming and taking care of our Y Woods, and we may have some more requests for you in the future. Next item on our agenda, number six, is to adopt the fiscal year 202, fiscal year budget, and Stuart, why don't you lead us into this? For those of you that didn't follow all the exciting budget discussions, there were a lot of, a lot of hard fought, not fought, a lot of hard discussions that we had with a lot of different departments. You know, I, I would just say, overall, I really respect Stuart, the way you manage your departments, and we were able to ask you to cut certain things, and you were able to work that out, and you came up with almost $120,000 of savings, and we're really grateful for that. But if, other than that, if you'd give us an overview of where we are, please, we'll move forward.
Well, yeah, tonight, we're here to ask the board to adopt the fiscal year 2020 budget. It's a total of $13,222,500. It consists of approximately $4.13 million for laying out, maintaining, and repairing of highways and bridges, and $9.1 million, give or take, for the general administration, recreation, police, fire, and other services that the town provides. You are correct, Donald, we made changes in the budget of $119,910 from the original presentation. That included increases for the Bennington Free Library, the Park McCullough Library in North Bennington, and for the Bennington Rescue Squad. And so most of the additional cuts came from the general fund and/or the highway fund, and I won't go through all that detail. But tonight, I'm asking for you folks to approve that budget. It will have an impact of approximately 2.53% increase in the overall budget that's combined general, highway, and fire. It'll amount to, based on the current grand list and the revenues that we have available today that we can project, about a 3.7 cent increase in the overall tax rate, which is 3.19%. If the grand list grows, or if other revenues are found, such as bridge and culvert monies from the highway fund, or Class II paving monies in the highway fund, that, that increase will be reduced. And I anticipate that more than likely will be reduced slightly when we get time to set the tax rate. But tonight, we need a vote of this board to adopt the budget, and then the following motion would be to approve the warning and sign it, and we can do that when we get there.
And, and the agencies, of course, are a completely different thing, and not...
The agencies, there are agencies outside the budget that are on the warning, and we can go through that when we get to that.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So for the purposes of discussion, is there a motion to accept the budget as hammered out?
It's up, move.
Second.
Okay. Discussion on the budget that we have worked on this month and we have in front of us? Are there additional questions? Are there any...
We talked about it enough.
Okay, all right.
There was a lot of discussion. Those, I mean, they were good meetings. I felt like we were, we knew, you gave great explanations, Stu. We knew what we were, were looking at, and I really thank you for leading us through it.
And thank you to your department heads for the work they put in.
Yeah, I don't, you know, with the, with the budget coming in at about the inflation rate year after year, I don't know how you do it with the number of things that we add in, but I appreciate the fact that you continue to get a tremendous amount from your staff, and they seem to really rise to the occasion, so.
I think a lot goes, a lot of credit goes to my staff. I set the guidelines, and they try to meet them, and that's nice.
That's great, great. All right, well, all in favor of, yes, you may.
There's some people that got here from Whitehead once, you talk, and they do that?
About the Y Woods?
No.
I think we're going to, we'll have to wait until next week to do that, so let's keep, let's keep going with this agenda. And if we get done early, we'll, we'll be, how about we do it then, okay? then, okay? Let's get through this first. So, we have a motion on the table, all in favor of approving the budget as drafted. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, so that is passed unanimously. And the next item on the agenda is to approve the annual, approve the annual meeting warning. Stuart, would you like to take us through that, please?
I would be glad to. The annual meeting this year is scheduled for the evening of March 4th, beginning at 7:00 PM, most likely following the various school board annual meetings that precede it. And then the vote, Australian ballot will take place on March 5th. The annual meeting, generally, the floor meeting discusses the annual report, which should be going to print by the end of this week. It includes the audit and various reports of the various departments. Select board members' compensation is discussed at the floor meeting, and then any other business to be transacted. The business to be voted on this year includes the budget, which we've just talked about. There are three select board members' positions open. The town moderator position is open, and the town treasurer position is open, and those are all three-year terms. We have a bond question on the ballot this year, seeking to receive $1.2 million for the purposes of purchasing a ladder truck for the Bennington Fire Department. There is a petitioned question for a mayoral form of government. That is Article III, and it is listed in its entirety on the ballot. And then we move into the agencies. Articles IV through 15 are all agencies requesting specific amounts of monies from the town. Most of these are level-funded from last year. The only change, I believe, is the Bennington Free Clinic petitioned for an additional $7,500 over what they had last year, and that is now on the ballot. They received their signatures. So, with that, that is the annual town warning for this year, and I seek your approval and signature so that we may post the warning and move towards the election.
Stu, could I, could I ask, have we sent something to all the agencies requesting that they come and speak at the floor meeting?
Only at the original. We haven't, we haven't sent out a reminder that they're-
Could we send one?
We'll try to do that.
Thank you.
So, for the purposes of discussion, I'd accept a motion to approve the annual meeting warning.
移到
Thank you, thank you. Any discussion or questions on the warning as we have in front of us? Comment?
The comment is, I mean, just reminding that, you know, as we, as a community vote, and we vote yes or no on these particular agency items, that's not a reduction in our tax rate if they're all, if they, if they go through, all go through, we're just going up in our tax rate. So, we're able to control our budget. We spent a lot of time on that. I just collectively want to remind folks that when you see a higher percentage in your tax rate, if all these are voted through, it's just a, it's a healthy reminder that Stuart is not calculating that agency number into his 3.7?
3.7, that's correct.
It's just a fair reminder that if those all get voted through, what does that do to our tax rate?
It moves it up by approximately another penny.
So, we go from a 2.5% increase to a 3.5% increase if all of the agencies get-
Or 3.7 cents to 4.7 cents.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's just, it's a fair reminder. We're very mindful of the budget, and I don't, I don't know if RJ's gonna talk to me for the next two years how mean I was to him in the budget meetings, but the idea is that we definitely did everything we could do to keep the budget within reason when it relates to the town, and the agencies are above and beyond our control, so.
And I do think that's part of the reason that's really important, that agencies come to the floor meeting, and-
I couldn't agree more with you.
Quite honestly, I do think that it would make sense to have those discussions earlier rather than the night before election, but-
I just want it to be a nice reminder that when their tax rate comes out, that it's four-something percent, that we didn't-
Sneak anything in.
Smoke and mirrors here. I mean, it's very clear. We are setting a rate, and then if the agencies all go through, it increases from there.
Well, to be more blunt about it, if the voters approve these agencies, that's where the responsibility was.
I just think it's a fair reminder to everybody what it does to the tax rate.
Well, and the imponderable is what happens to the grand list, so we have to see what happens there, too, in terms of the final rate. Yeah, so. Other questions, other comments? If there are none, then I would say, all in favor of approving the annual meeting warning as posted? Say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
And I will circulate that for your signatures.
So, the next order of business is manager's report, but is there somebody that wanted to speak during the citizens' comment period but did not get a chance to speak during citizens' comment? Rose, can you nudge her, please?
I don't know.
Okay, yeah, sure. So, we normally try to do citizens' comment at the beginning of the meeting, but you, we welcome your comments, and thank you for coming.
I don't know if you're gonna discuss it or not.
We know schedules are difficult.
If people don't know me, I'm the director of the senior center. My last day is this Wednesday. I turn in, I would retire on December of 19th, and I'm just confused. I don't know who's gonna take over my decision. Nobody's met with me. I have new programs coming in that even if Carrie comes over, she will not know about, and, and stuff like that, and then rumors got it. The Y is gonna take over the senior center. Things are gonna change. I'm just here to clarify it, because our seniors is 50, the Y seniors are 60 years old. So, there's a difference there, and any fee that they would have to pay to go to the senior center would be a hardship for probably 75 to 80% of our seniors. So, I'm just confused because, and my volunteers are confused. They don't know if they want them to stay there and help them, or are they done when I'm done?
Yeah. Thank you for all your service, first of all. You know, we really, really appreciate your many, many years of service and taking care of our seniors, and we are very, very grateful for that. We did miss, you may, probably missed the first discussion we had on this, in which we said, just because of the timing of this, there's a lot up in the air right now. Stuart went through a little explanation, which I wouldn't want him to have to do entirely again where we are, but, but we are admittedly in the process of transition, and we're trying to make things better, and we're trying to make the investments in the senior center stronger. But Stuart, if you would like to very briefly summarize what you've already said.
Well, as you said, things are up in the air right now, Stu. I haven't been able to speak with you because I, as yet, don't have a direction from the board as to how we're going to proceed. As soon as I know that, I will meet with you, and I'll let you know what we're planning to do. But I can guarantee you that the senior center is not closing. The senior center will not change dramatically over the next, certainly over the next year, perhaps longer. And this board has already voted not to charge fees for members of the community or members who don't live in this community to attend our senior center. And unless this board changes that decision, there will be no fees charged to people who use the center. It is a 50 and older senior center, and it will remain that way.
Yeah, we want, we want to keep working on this, so we-
I missed a meeting with Stu because I had an emergency here a few months, what was it, a few, about a month or two ago, when you were meeting with people, and I haven't got a chance between personal and being busy and him being busy.
Well, thank you. So, tell us, if you would, how long have you been at the senior center now?
20 years.
20 years.
It was 20 years, not totally.
Yeah, how about the-
Thank you, thank you again. We really appreciate your service, and, you know, we
will let this out, we will not let this out. We will explain it as we know it, but we're, it's a work in progress. We're trying to make things better. We're trying to increase our investments both in the, in the recreation center, but also in the senior center to the extent that we can, so.
Okay, it's just that I've got new people coming in that, like Carrie wouldn't know about.
And Stuart can help you with that.
That's free to come in. Okay, I could just make a list and email you, too?
We've got time. We've got time.
Take her out to lunch.
Two days. After that, I'm on a cruise with my-
Well, I understand that, Stu. I do understand that.
My celebration. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so-
One quick question. He said, "Mating Mort, I live on Beach Street."
Please identify yourself.
Mating Mort, I live on Beach Street. The rumor has been going around that you've already hired someone through the Y to take over the senior activities, or I can't remember the title she has, but it's not just the director at the senior, but it's up at the rec center itself, but it's something to do with-
Do tell.
The senior activities or something through the Y. That's the rumor going around, that you've already hired someone.
That's, that's a part of our proposals that we're looking at, but that has not been completed. That has not been done.
Sounds like there's a lot in the room now.
Because, like I said, there's, I know, but I mean, like I said, it's just going around that it's already been hired, so that's why I was just concerned.
Yeah. Okay, we'll keep you posted. Yeah, thank you. All right, so let's move on to item number nine, the manager's report. Stuart, what have you got for us tonight?
Well, it's a very short report tonight. I only have one action item, and this is for seeking select board approval to close School Street from Main to Pleasant on September 14th, which is a Saturday, from 8:00 AM until 5:00 PM for the 2019 food truck event, the second annual food truck event coming to Bennington. And I ask for your permission to do so.
Is there a motion to close the School Street for the food truck event?
移到
Everyone's jumping on that one. I love that event. Any discussion besides how good it is?
Yes. So, question. So, will we, so, I also love that event. It's great. So, we're gonna close the street. We're not charging them for the police, the extra police time charging, closing the street and-
Well, I don't think we needed an extra, extra police for this event last year, and I don't think there was a charge.
So, could I ask, it might be nice to have someone, and I'm not suggesting that we charge them, but I'm saying it might be nice to have someone directing traffic crossing the street from where the food trucks were over to the Hart Lot. There was a lot of traffic. There was a lot of just jaywalking right in that area. So, it might be nice to have an officer there if we could, and I'm, and-
We'll take a look at it.
And, you know, but if we did that, I mean, it feels like these kinds of events are, you know, are great for the community, and I would not want that to end up being an extra cost, I mean, for-
Normally, if, if-
For them.
Normally, the cost is generated when it's, when it's an event that requires extra staffing, where we have to bring in people who are not on staff that day.
Okay.
So, if, if that is an issue, and last year was the first annual, so no one really knew whether or not it was gonna be as, as great as it was. So, if that, if that is a necessity, we'll talk with Betsy and her partner, and we'll work that out. Okay?
I wasn't there, but I heard it was fabulous, and I would just say, this year it's probably gonna be bigger, and there'll be more people probably making that trek across Main Street, so.
Once we have the same weather, she-
Oh, please!
Let's make that part of the motion, that there will be good weather on September 14th.
That was fantastic.
Okay, all in favor of the closing of portion of the School Street as requested? Say aye.
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 Okay, so that's, you have that, Stuart? What else have you got for us?
I have nothing in your packet. We sent out the results of the citizen survey. We will now be releasing it out into the public. We wanted to make sure you folks saw it first, and that's really all I have.
Are you going to be releasing it in this form? It's quite difficult to read, or is there a sort of a summarizing?
Well, there's a, the summary that you received in your packet, and then there is the entire survey results. So, I think we'll make the results available. We can perhaps get them on the website. The summary can, can be released, I think, even more, more easily, easily?
Easily, yeah.
Help me with that word, but nonetheless, we'll get it out there, and it'll be available for people.
Can I, can we, are we at comments? Is he showing up?
Yeah.
He said you were done, and I just, I had a, we have some vocal citizens about, I see John sitting here, so I just wanted to ask a question. Are, there are renovations to John's old space that had a little issue with the septic and plumbing that created a little bit of a him getting removed. Can you just give us an update on that? John Shannon is right there.
Oh, the sewer backup?
Yeah.
Yes.
Just kind of cost compared to budgeted expenses, and just so we can have an open conversation for the community.
Sure. It has been a long and relatively complex process. For those of you who may not remember, there was a block that occurred in, just beyond the manhole in South Street, which caused sewer to back up Elm Street, and the path of least resistance took it up through the toilet in the first floor of the blacksmith shop, generally the headquarters of the Bennington Downtown Alliance. It flooded the building seriously. It was a gusher because it was taking all of the sewage that flows from south in Elm Streets, and it contaminated not only the first floor and the flooring and the subflooring and-
Destroyed.
All, destroyed. It also contaminated the crawl space below it, and so we've, we had a massive undertaking. We worked with our insurer, which is the VLCT Passive Property and Casualty Insurance Fund. It's a municipal-funded trust. They ultimately agreed to the cost of the cleanup, which is approximately $68,000, and we have a $1,000 deductible. So, the project is now finished. We're closing out the accounts with the league. We will be reimbursed for all of our expenses up to that $1,000.
How does it reflect compared to the overall cost of the renovation and the cleanup?
That is the, that is the cost. That is the total cost.
So, the only cost the town had a pocket was $1,000?
$1,000.
Can I, so, and I don't know the answer to this. Equipment, does that include sort of any losses in terms of, were the computers destroyed?
The tenants should have had insurance on their equipment.
The tenants being the Bennington Downtown Alliance?
This is, this is the fixture, the fixtures, toilets, the, the stuff that we own.
Okay, so then that's a different insurance claim?
So, there would be a different claim if any instruments were damaged that belonged to BDA.
Is the BDA back in?
I don't think they're back in yet.
John? John, John? Are you back in?
We are still upstairs in an office, waiting for the work to be done.
What does that, what do you mean, waiting for the, what does that mean, waiting for the work to be done?
The hatchway is still open. There's still a door off. We haven't given permission to, and to move. Furniture box is back in, so in the building, it was got occupied by the city.
Okay, so we're not quite finished with the renovation, then?
We're, we're-
Okay.
This close.
Close.
Punch list.
Close.
All right. Thank you, Stuart. We are going into other business, and if the board would indulge me, I'd like to offer my other business first, and then we'll go down the line. But I would like to read a statement that I hope will inspire us to take up a few action items at a future meeting. So, two weeks ago, Vermont's Attorney General, TJ Donovan, delivered a message that was hard to hear. He concluded that a wide range of hateful speech is protected under freedom of speech laws, and conceded that current law allows language that nearly all of us would consider deeply reprehensible. Although largely frustrating, his report was reassuring on one point. A thorough investigation determined that the Bennington Police Department did a very good job, given the legal limitations imposed on their enforcement ability and their existing resources. But having a good police force that works hard and follows the rules was not enough to protect one of our citizens from racist attacks. Our community elected Kaya Morris to the Vermont House of Representatives for two full terms before she felt forced to resign. We owe her our deepest appreciation for tirelessly serving our town and state. Kaya was attacked and made to feel unwelcome by some individuals within our community. About this, I am extremely sorry. This incident has brought to our attention that we need to work even harder at being a fully inclusive community. The issues of hate speech, First Amendment rights, online attacks, and vile actions directed toward others that currently plague our country will need to play out at a national scale and in the courts. But here at home, we must do all we can to be the most open-minded, supportive, respectful community we can be. While small-town government certainly is not going to fix everything that divides- While small-town government certainly is not going to fix everything that divides our country, here are four things I would ask this board to consider doing immediately. Number one, make sure our house is in order. While few of us feel we are prejudiced in our views, all of us are shaped by our life experiences, these subconscious biases affect our decisions and communications, sometimes inadvertently making others feel less welcome or valued in the community. We should call on our town manager to develop a plan to offer appropriate implicit bias training to our entire town staff, including the select board, much as has been happening around the state in communities like Rattleboro and in the legislature. This in no way reflects criticism of our excellent town staff, instead, this should be viewed as part of a continuing effort for our employees and the select board to increase our understanding of what it takes to support a diverse community. Number two, make the most of what we have. There are myriad nonprofits and agencies working on many of the issues that diminish our community. The select board must increase our awareness of these efforts, learn from them, and wherever possible, support effective partnerships, help identify gaps, and draw on existing resources. An example of recent meaningful partnerships is the opioid task force, many groups coming together to develop multi-pronged strategies to alleviate the adverse effects of substance use disorder in our community. Likewise, on Martin Luther King Day, the Greater Bennington Interfaith Council and the Bennington Peace and Justice Center partnered to roll out a year-long series of discussions about difference and mediation training skills in partnership with Susan Scarbati of Bennington College. Our board needs to know more about what's being done, what work needs to be done, and we need to participate much more actively. Number three, look to the future. The select board's vision for Bennington is summarized in our town plan. This document is updated every five years and articulates our aspirations as a town. While these plans tend to focus on mechanics, it's time for our town vision to include specific reference to the fact that we strive to be a community that is welcoming to all, where anybody can feel safe and respected, and that we will actively work to root out racism and other forms of discrimination. In this spirit, as we approach our 2020 town plan revision, we should engineer a process that ensures inclusivity will be specifically and meaningfully addressed. This will require a paced, thoughtful, public approach, one that would need to be started well in advance of the next revision. Number four, we need to acknowledge our limitations and push on. This is just a beginning, there is no one-time fix, and as Tabitha Polmore from Rutland NAACP recently stated in Bennington, we cannot shy away from having these important conversations just because they're hard. This is true especially for those of us for whom the safest route would seem to be saying nothing. The vast majority of Bennington residents have kind hearts and good minds, yet we all need to make a conscious effort to do better, to condemn hateful actions with courage, to support each other with compassion, and to be open to building a community that may be more than we had previously understood or perhaps even hoped. We won't get it all right, we will stumble, stumble over our words, but we need to keep trying. While it's not my place to speak for the board, I know that my fellow members care every bit as deeply about this as I do. We cannot say with honesty that Bennington is a town without racism, though we wish we could. We cannot say that Bennington is a place where people of color always feel safe and welcome, though we wish we could. We cannot even say that ours is a town where race, gender, sexual orientation, religion, or disability are never discriminated against, despite the fact that it is law and we strongly support. What we can say is that our community aspires to welcome everyone, that there is still difficult work to do, but that we are up for this, and that we need to do it together, starting immediately. Thank you.
I'd like to just add a few words, if I may.
Go ahead, Jim. Well, actually, well, yeah, go ahead.
Okay. I want the general public to know that I've already begun working on legislation that will try to combat it criminally, but certainly civilly, when people like the individual who harassed and terrorized Kaia could face some, some sort of penalty, and Erica, the state's attorney, Erica Marthage, when she was up two weeks ago, I said, there's gotta be something we can do, and she said, look at Title 16 in the Vermont Code, and it's about bullying, and there are penalties for people who bully, especially in, in schools, and that could serve as our, as our framework, to help, you know, to at least give, not only give comfort to those minority groups, and people of color, and sexual minorities, or I'll just, you know, LGBTQ commu, community, because right now, there really isn't much of a sense of protection that they have, other than the law, you know, if, if they're assaulted, of course, but it also give a warning to this individual in particular, that there'll be consequences that he'll face, besides, you know, just public condemnation. And finally, I just want to say that, in addition to what Donald said, you know, we need to gird ourselves with compassion and arm our minds and our hearts, with all the courage we can muster and express with our words, that we will condemn hate wherever we hear it or whenever we see it. It'll take courage to stare down, but there is no choice, there is no solace in silence. And finally, to the people of Bennington, we should not despair. The voters of Bennington made flesh Martin Luther King's dream by electing a woman based upon the content of her character, and we did it five times. The people of Bennington are good people. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Other, other business, Jean, anything?
Other business or comments?
No, no, no comments, this is other business, yeah?
Two things, one is, the high school presented British Invasion on Saturday night, it was a concert, it was two and a half hours, I think, or longer, of all British music, and it was absolutely amazing, the principal of the high school, who knew, is a rock star, like, seriously, a rock star, he sang and played the guitar like I couldn't believe, so, wow, that was amazing, and my other, this is my, that was my fun comment, this is my more business comment, where are we, or have we begun the process of forming the committee for evaluating the rec center, and how that model is working, and what that's gonna look like, have we started to...
We have taken applications, and we've taken letters of interest from individuals.
Great.
We have not begun to call them together, and essentially appoint anyone to the committee as yet. Focus over the last several weeks has been to try to bring a budget together...
Right.
To get this business done, and to begin the search for a new community development director, but I, I think within the, within the next 28 days, we'll, we'll have a committee up and running.
Do you have enough people that have responded to you?
I believe so, I believe so.
Good.
I mean, I don't know all of the names myself, but they have been gathered, and they're available.
That's good news, I didn't know that that had happened, so that's, that's all I have, thank you.
Carson?
Good? He's packing up. I just want to echo some of the things that Jim had to say there, Donald prepared a very detailed statement, and I just, I think the action plan is, is very specific, and it'll be nice to work together as a board to only strengthen that action plan, I just want to remind everyone and thank the, the different resources that went into the long process related to, you know, why we are hearing Donald go through those, those steps, in the, that come from the local law enforcement level, at the state level, and those individuals coming down here, so it'll be nice to actually work together as a, as a board, and, and go through those action items, and most importantly, just thanking all those other individuals that were involved in this process, and the resources that went into it, both from time and financially, to kind of get to the, the truth that kind of surrounds this, this entire situation, and I know it's sensitive, so I think that's important.
Thank you, Carson, well said. Jean?
Just want to thank you for, for your thoughtful comments, I think, I, I appreciate the time and the, and just the amount of, of real heart and thoughtfulness that went into, into preparing that statement, and I do think it gives us quite a bit to work on, and I, I think what you've outlined is a very thorough, very step-by-step way that we can both pull the community together and also take care of ourselves in-house, and I, and I do appreciate it, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Two things, Donald, thank you for your comments, and thank you for the blueprint to give us some footsteps and good path to take for our community, so thank you for putting us on that path. Second, I too was at, the British Invasion was great, and the MAU Drama Club is gonna be presenting Romeo and Juliet, tickets went on sale today for Thursday, February 7th, Friday, February 8th, and two shows on February 9th at 2:00 and 7:00 PM, so their productions are always amazing, they will sell out, so you can get tickets at the high school, I believe they're $8 apiece, and they now have an online, I don't have a website, I apologize, but they do have an online ticket purchasing, you can probably find that on the high school's website, but check it out.
Excellent, good stuff going on. Stuart has his hand up, Ro, should I?
Yes, I generally don't do this at the end of other business, but I, I think it's important, when we talk about the truth, when it comes to these kinds of events, that folks on both sides recognize that misinformation, exaggerations, and fabrications hurt the entire story. There was an article in the Banner of a meeting held over in Rattleboro on the Martin Luther King Day, wherein an allegation was made that an individual was at the press conference brandishing a weapon, and the Bennington police failed to do anything about it, that is patently false, it did not happen. The individual stood in the hallway with yours truly, five Bennington police officers and two state police officers, listening to the press conferences that took place, and I think those kinds of exaggerations, those kinds of misinformations fuel the fire, they don't do anything to dampen the coals.
Thank you, Stuart. Thank you, thank you. All right, well, we have a need for an executive session on a contract matter, so I would accept a motion to go into executive session for a contract. Second, all in favor? All right, three-minute break before we do, okay?